Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yanis?
Here.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Present.
Thank you. Counsel, we need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone of the Fourth of July holiday schedule for the city. In observance of Independence Day, city offices are closed for business on Monday, July 4th, and that includes all of our buildings, of course, with the exception of police and fire. In addition, there will be no refuse collection on Monday. Instead, there'll be a one-day delay throughout the week, and Friday's collection will be moved Saturday. So please take note of that. And I also wanted to remind everyone that pursuant to state statute, consumer-grade fireworks can only be used during the Fourth of July holiday from June 29th to July 4th, and the timeframe is from 11:00 a.m. until 11:45 p.m., only on private property and only with the permission of that property owner. So our police, fire department, DPW, they do the best they can to enforce this and confiscate illegal fireworks. So just wanted everyone to be aware of that. It's not a desirable assignment to have to enforce this, but we do. Please be sure, if you're using fireworks, to use them properly, only during those days and only during those hours. And Mayor, as you know, every meeting now, we've been highlighting a board or commissioner too to show the good work that they're doing. We have a wonderful core of volunteers that help run the city, and they do an amazing job. And we've heard a lot of great presentations from our boards and commissions. And this evening, we're going to hear about our pension boards, and our finance and budget director, Jennifer Varney, is going to kick that off. And we have a couple of important board members that are with us this evening as well. Thank you.
Ms. Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kaczyuski, and members of council. I'm here tonight to provide some insight on the inner workings of the city's two pension boards. While information is often presented regarding results, funding levels, investment performance, et cetera, this presentation is going to provide some insight as to the roles and responsibilities of the pension board members. What do they actually do? The city has two separate pension funds that are administered by two separate boards. The general employees retirement system covers non-police and fire personnel. This system is closed to new members. It is 86% funded as of the last actuarial valuation and pays out pensions to 357 retirees with an average pension of $31,829. It is a closed plan, and there are only 71 active members remaining. The annual contribution to the plan is about $4 million, and it is funded through the general fund and the water and sewer fund. The police and fire retirement system covers all police and fire personnel and is the city's only open system. It is 72% funded and pays out pensions to 423 retirees and E-ROP members at an average pension of $54,612. There are 227 active members, and the annual contribution is $13.5 million, which is funded through a dedicated village. The board for the general employees retirement system consists of five trustees. The city treasurer and finance and budget director serve by virtue of their position. There is one citizen representative appointed by council. Richard Wyler, who is here tonight, is the appointed citizen rep and has been a board member for 26 years. The remaining two trustees, Jared Bedoin and Michael Moore, are elected by the members of the system. The police and fire board also consists of five trustees, the city treasurer by virtue of position, and one police trustee, Randy Schwab, and one fire trustee, Jonathan Bell, as elected by the other members. There are two citizen representatives. They're appointed by council. John Lamorato has been a board trustee for 10 years, and Rob Malsick, who is here tonight, has been a trustee for eight years. Both boards also employ professionals that assist in the administration of the retirement system. A legal advisor, currently attorney Tom Mashad of Vanoverbeek, Mashad &amp; Timoney, and actuary Gabriel Roder Smith &amp; Company. The actuary provides annual reports that calculate the funding level of the plans as well as the annual required contributions. The actuary also calculates pension estimates and final benefit amounts for retirees. The board's investment consultant, the Bryce Group of Morgan Stanley, Greystone Consulting, assists the board regarding investment decisions with the goal of achieving the highest return on pension assets with the minimum amount of risk. So what are the main responsibilities of the pension board? Taken here from the charter, the pension board has the power and authority to administer, manage, and operate the retirement system. The primary functions are to attend monthly and special board meetings, retain and monitor planned professionals, manage investment of planned assets, development of investment and administrative policies, administer pension benefits, establish actuarial assumptions, and ensure compliance with plan provisions and applicable laws. The boards have a fiduciary responsibility to make decisions that are in the best interest of the members of the retirement system. Taken here from the city charter, the board shall exercise its fiduciary responsibility for the exclusive benefit of the retirement system's participants. The trustees on both boards take this responsibility very seriously and commit substantial time, energy, and expertise in fulfilling their duties and responsibilities. This commitment is critical to the success of the retirement system. Now, I would like you to hear briefly from two of the citizen members of the pension boards. Richard Wyler has been a member of the general employees pension board for 26 years. He is a retired police officer from the Detroit Police Department and a former director of the Police Officers Labor Council. Mr. Wyler's unique perspective has been a great benefit to the pension board. Rob Malsick has been a member of the police and fire pensions board for eight years. He is the former city controller for the city of Warren and is currently the chief financial officer for the city of Troy. His financial experience is of great benefit to the police and fire pension system. Mr. Wyler and Mr. Malsick are both here tonight to make a few comments, which will conclude the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. You just said everything I was going to kind of say. I had my notes written down there. My name is Richard Wyler. I'm chairman currently of the general employees retirement board. I've been on the board, like was so stated, for 26 years. I think you want to know exactly what the boards do, and there's two main responsibilities for trustees and pension boards. The first one is to manage the funds that are set aside for the beneficiaries of the plan. And the second one would be to make sure that the beneficiaries receive the proper benefits that they've incurred throughout the years of service. Those are the two main objectives. Mine, as a chairman of the board, as the mayor does here, I preside over the meetings. We have an agenda. We follow the agenda. If we ever have any general public come in, they have a chance to speak, as per the law, and we follow all the rules, regulations prescribed by state laws, by your charter, and by documents for the pension trustees. I don't know what else to say, because I think Jennifer really said everything else that we do. Now, if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them.
How long do you let them speak for?
Pardon me?
How long do you let them speak for when they come in to talk? Just kidding.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Well, we thank you for being here and appreciate your report. And Rob, anything to add to it? Mr. Malsick, we do appreciate your service. 26 years is a long time to do anything, and we've had very great success, I think, with our employees, retaining employees, and we seem to have very happy retirees. So we appreciate the work that you do. Mr. Malsick?
Sure. Thank you very much, counsel, for having me tonight. I also wanted to thank you for letting me serve our community. I know you guys are the ones that put us on the board, so thank you very much. John Lamorato and I have been on the board, me eight years and John 10 years, and in that time, we've done our best to get the funding levels up. You saw 72% over there. It was in the 50s earlier. Jennifer, her leadership has helped us with the actuaries, getting the actuaries, what we're in charge of with the actuaries, that Richard didn't mention, is that we make sure that we're up to date on everything, like our assumed rate of return, our mortality tables, all those items that fit in. And so one of the big things we've done is we've closed the amortization period, which means we have an unfunded liability, and now we're amortizing that under a shrinking amount of years each year. So that's very important. That wasn't done probably about four or five years ago, I think. So that was important. And then also the professionals that you had up there. We've hired the best. GRS is the best actuary firm in the area. Tim Bryce and his leadership with Morgan Stanley, they're the best. I know our fund over the last 10 years is ranking in the top 10% for return, which is a great testament, not only to the board, but to Tim and his team at Morgan Stanley. And then lastly, Tom Meashaw keeps us out of trouble legally, and that's really important, right? And we make sure that we pay the police and firefighters who've worked really hard for our city and retired, make sure that they get the right amount, as Richard had mentioned. So those are the things that I'm really proud of for this board, and thank you very much for letting us serve.
Thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I do want to take a moment to recognize and remember one of the original city council members here in the city of Sterling Heights. In 2018, we celebrated 50 years as a city, so we are now coming up on 54 years as a city. And one of our original council members was James E. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy died on Friday, June 3rd, this year, at age 90. We thought it'd be a nice time to recognize him and his service to the community and just share a few words about Mr. McCarthy. He and his family moved into Sterling Heights in 1960, and as I said, was one of the original members of the city council here, being elected by the voters in May of 1968. He ran on a platform of cooperating with our school districts for the maximum utilization of the existing facilities for the benefit of all of our residents. He focused on the expansion of our police and fire departments to meet the needs of a growing community, and was also focused extensively on the library and that facility and helping it grow into the gem that it is here today. While on city council, he served as the council's legislative representative to the Michigan Municipal League, and he was a member of the first charter commission. He was also a decorated combat Korean War veteran who earned 10 different medals, including the Bronze Star and the United Nations Medal. He and his wife Florence had six children. One accomplishment that he was particularly proud of was that he had recommended that an official newsletter be sent to the city residents informing them of the actions of their city government. He felt that communication with the citizens must be accomplished if Sterling Heights is to become a well-organized community. This can be done through a newsletter informing the citizens of the various programs, ordinances, and services that the city has to offer and what to expect in the future. Please join me for a brief moment of silence in remembrance of our original city council member, James E. McCarthy. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation, and this is to acknowledge and accept donations to the 2022 Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair by AT&amp;T, Christian Financial Credit Union, and Stellantis in the cumulative amount of $35,000. We do have a presentation from our community relations director, Melanie Davis. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mr. Kaczyuski. After a long hiatus, I am so happy to be standing before you this evening, talking about Sterling Fest 2022. After the past few years, it almost doesn't feel real, but my department and along with staff from Parks and Recreation, DPW, facilities, police and fire, and others have been hard at work planning what we know is going to be another unforgettable event for our residents and guests. As you know, each year, Sterling Heights receives very generous corporate financial support for Sterling Fest, which really helps offset a significant portion of the cost to produce our festival, which has become one of the largest and best community festivals in Macomb County, and dare I say, even the state of Michigan. It draws more than 125,000 visitors over the three-day festival, and so it really provides some truly amazing visibility for our corporate donors. And I'm happy to announce that this year, the community relations department has received donations of $10,000 each from AT&amp;T and Stellantis, and $15,000 from Christian Financial Credit Union. All three of these corporate citizens have a long-term presence here in Sterling Heights, and we enjoy positive relationships with all of them. Stellantis has a major manufacturing facility based in Sterling Heights, and they've actively supported Sterling Fest for many years. AT&amp;T provides vital telecom and internet services and solutions to our residents and broadcasts our SHTV programming via Channel 99 for all AT&amp;T customers. They have also actively supported Sterling Fest for the past several years. And Christian Financial Credit Union has a gorgeous corporate headquarters just down the road at 15 Mile and Van Dyke, and they have supported city initiatives, including sponsorship of the Parks and Recreation Esports Arena over in the community center, and of course, the Sterling Fest fireworks. And all three of these donors provide economic stimulus in Sterling Heights through investments and job creation, and we are extremely grateful for their generous donations. As a part of our administrative policy, I'm respectfully requesting city council's acceptance of these donations tonight, but before that, I'd like to invite Ashley May from Christian Financial Credit Union to say a few words and request to have a quick photo with the mayor at the conclusion of her remarks, if possible. Ashley?
Good evening, everybody. Another year here. I'm very excited to be here, and thank you for inviting me out tonight. I am the marketing manager at Christian Financial Credit Union, and since 2018, CFCU has brought the fireworks to the Sterling Heights citizens and are excited to be sponsoring the fireworks again this year after a few-year hiatus. We're all very excited to have it back. What a better way to exhibit one of our core philosophies of people helping people by investing into the community of Sterling Heights. For many years, Christian Financial has partnered with the city of Sterling Heights to bring different programs and events to its residents. We look forward to continuing the partnership in many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. We truly appreciate the partnership that we've had with Christian Financial Credit Union, AT&amp;T, and Stellantis, you three, along with others. But you three particularly have been incredible corporate citizens, and the esports arena has a special place in my heart, so we appreciate that. So I think you got a big check.
I do.
And I'm happy to take it. All right. Thank you again, but counsel, we do have a suggested action?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to acknowledge and accept donations of $10,000 each by AT&amp;T and Stellantis, and $15,000 from Christian Financial Credit Union to the 2022 Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Schmidt?
Just a comment. You know, this event wouldn't be possible without our sponsors and without our community's support. So Christian Financial continues to step up, not only for this event, but as was previously said, other events as well, Music in the Park, and Stellantis and AT&amp;T. We thank them, and they really helped to make this the truly successful event that it is. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. This is to conduct a public hearing to consider the application by Philip Roggeri for residential planned unit development on approximately 2.25 acres of land situated on the north side of Irving Road, east of Van Dyke, PUD 21-0002. And I believe we're going to have a presentation from our city planner, Mr. McLeod. Anything for us tonight?
I do, Mr.?
It's not on my notes, so I wasn't sure if you wanted.
Absolutely.
You wanted to just stay out of the hot box.
I was going to say. Be more than glad to do that as well, but no.
No, you're in there.
In terms of the application before you tonight, as you noted, this is for planned unit development request by Mr. Gallo and Mr. Roggeri on behalf of Sterling Landings III. This PUD, which if granted, would permit an apartment development of 64 units, one and two-bedroom units to be located within that apartment complex. Of note, the original request was for 84, but coming out of the planning commission, that number was obviously reduced. The location is 8271 Irving Road. The current zoning of the property is Zone 02, Planned Office District. The applicant is proposing those one and two, one-two-story building, which would be considered to be Phase 3, although it doesn't necessarily touch Phases 1 and 2 of Sterling Landings, but it's separated actually by the AT&amp;T site directly to the north of the subject property. The applicant is proposing 32-one bedroom and 32-two bedrooms. The application was considered at the planning commission level. They did request a number of amendments or a number of changes to the plans from the original proposal that came forward at the January meeting, and at the March meeting, the application did receive a 5-3 vote from the planning commission for recommendation for approval. Here you can see zoning map in terms of the consideration area. The red box towards the middle of the screen highlights the property itself. You can see single-family residential to the east, office designation to the north, commercial designation to the west, as well as to the south. Taking a look at transitions, obviously, office and multiple family are typical transitions coming out of what would normally be seen as a commercial corridor along Van Dyke. Of note, this is also within the Van Dyke Mixed Juice Corridor, which is an overlay district, which provides for additional land uses, including residential, on either the first floor or upper stories of non-residential buildings within this section of the city. Moving right into the Van Dyke Mixed Juice Corridor, master plan designation is noted on this. Obviously, the property is the last property on the eastern boundary, if you will, of the Van Dyke Mixed Juice Corridor. Series of aerial photos is kind of giving you some of the context, looking northeast in this particular direction, downward on the site itself, looking to the northwest, looking southwest, again, from an aerial perspective, and looking southeast. Basically, a street view, if you will, of the subject site. Obviously, as you noted in those aerial photos, as well as this, the site does have a number of trees located in there as part of the site plan review process. If approved, the applicant would have to continue to move forward with the tree preservation requirements of the city. They are well aware of that. They provided the tree surveys and so forth, and their landscaping plans attempt to address some of that, but there is obviously some additional plantings that would be necessary or alternative methods of satisfying that ordinance. This is the site plan, as again, is modified coming out of the planning commission. One of the, well, there's two main conditions that came out of the planning commission of note. One was that the parking on the north side of the building be removed. That has been done by Mr. Gallo and his team. That was an attempt to provide for additional green space. Initially, the concept was to provide the green space on the north side of the building. They've kind of split the difference, if you will, between pushing the building slightly more north, as well as providing the green space on the north side of the building as well, albeit somewhat smaller than originally anticipated, but again, splitting that difference, if you will. And then the other one was, Mr. Gallo had originally proposed either a fence or a masonry wall along the east property line. That was solidified as a masonry wall in this particular sets of drawings at the direction of the planning commission. The landscaping plan, showing the landscaping of those areas around the building itself, pretty intense landscaping along the Irving Road runage, as well as the eastern property line, which is the property line that abuts the residential housing to the east. That will sit between carports, being shown on the east side of the property, and those residences and that masonry wall. But again, a series or an entire line of landscaping in that particular area. The landscaping amounts have all increased coming out of the planning commission's review of this. Their second meeting as well as coming forward to this meeting here. This rendering from Irving Road, again, one of the large things that happened during the planning commission review, this proposal was reduced from a three-story to a two-story proposal on this particular configuration, and this obviously shows that current height configuration of the building. Aerial perspective or aerial rendering of the site itself, again, on the northwest and east sides would be carports providing secured or covered parking. and east sides would be carports providing secured or covered parking for all those residents within the building itself. And then obviously, you can see pretty prominently here the courtyard, which would be an amenity for the overall residence within the community itself, within the apartment community itself. And then you can see that green space along Irving Road itself. Here shows a perspective of how the site would fit relative to the surrounding environment. Again, to the left-hand side of the screen, or the west side, is that commercial corridor immediately abutting Van Dyke. Van Dyke is just out of frame on the west, on the left-hand side of the screen here. And then the single-family residential to the east. That front green space to that residential subdivision, that is their stormwater facility that abuts, or that is utilized for that single-family subdivision there. And this is an interior view of the courtyard space as provided by Mr. Gallo's team. Changes made. These are some of the changes, again, coming out of the Planning Commission's review and ultimately into City Council. They did reduce that parking on the north side of the building in terms of providing for that additional green space. They did, again, shift that building slightly to the north, side yard setbacks to the east property line, what remained at 75 feet. The west setback increased slightly from 60 to 62 feet. The front yard setback was increased, again, noting the additional green space in the frontage. The recreation space was increased ever so slightly from just about 7,400 to 7,500 square feet. And then the green space, in terms of the number of plantings there, you can go through those, a slight increase in the landscaping being provided there. The building modification, the depth of the building did increase slightly due to an internal building issue relative to providing for, I believe, those electrical panels. If memory serves, the architect can correct me if I'm wrong. PUD modifications being requested. This can be done from the Planning Commission into City Council review. These aren't necessarily variances, these are simply modifications. If the City Council ultimately determines that the proposal itself is such that it deems or warrants these modifications for being provided for. The density, obviously, the density as proposed is significantly above the RM2 density that is normally or typically seen within the PUD ordinance itself. Front yard setback, albeit increased from what the Planning Commission originally saw, the front yard setback is still deficient in terms of the total front yard setback. Open space or recreation space, typically within our RM2 ordinance, which again, this is what this is being compared against, 32,000 square feet would be what's required for a development of this size at 64 units. Again, the applicant's providing just about 7,500 square feet in terms of the recreation space. That building length at 219 feet does exceed the maximum building length typically allowed in the RM2 district. Parking adjacent to building, typically, we have a more significant green space. Obviously, the developments that we've been seeing lately, including this one, propose a much more urban-type environment, putting the parking closer to the building itself. So, a modification is being sought in this particular instance. Parking spaces, normal parking requirements is 144 parking spots. Again, the, as proposed, and this is at the direction of the Planning Commission, 111 parking spaces are being shown on the particular site plan. Parking spaces for storage of recreational vehicles, this is a bit of an anomaly in our ordinance, but still a requirement. 10-by-25 parking space for boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles, none are proposed. In all honesty, most of our, or most of our multiple-family developments do request a waiver from that provision. And then parking lot trees, they have increased from the last proposal, but still somewhat shorted in terms of the number of parking lot trees as required. So, with that being said, the Planning Commission did recommend this coming out at their March meeting as a 5-3 vote. So, with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to make comments? Mr. Roggeri?
Good evening, everyone. Phil Roggeri, for the record, here on behalf of Mr. Gallo and our team. We have Mark Shovers, he's our architect, and Andy Wakeland, he's our engineer. Yes, Chris had accurately outlined what happened at the Planning Commission level. We had two extensive hearings. The first one had a tremendous number of comments from the public, as well as the commentary from the Planning Commission itself. So, it was remanded back and tabled for review and revisions. And as you can see, all the revisions that Mr. Gallo made, he addressed every single comment that was made by the members of the public, as well as the Planning Commission. The most significant that I saw was, the original proposal was an 84-unit building, two-unit, two buildings with three-story, which was one of the biggest concerns, I believe, from everyone that was at the meetings. And he had literally taken off a whole layer, made it a two-story facility, and reduced the units from 84 to 64. So, 20 units right off the top were shaved off. And in our earlier meetings for other sites, we indicated the ideal number of units is 100 units for most complexes, but because of the vicinity of the Sterling Landing 1 and 2 to the north, he's able to pool together the resources to have the economies of scale having a little lesser density than he anticipated. As I've said on other sites, this site here during the Planning Commission, this has been a dormant piece of land. It's not going to be developed. Its current zoning is really outdated. This is an opportunity that Mr. Gallo has been very successful at in acquiring remnant pieces of land and making them useful developments within our community. And as we talked at the last meeting on the Shaner proposal, we are lacking considerably for multifamily housing in Sterling Heights, and this is another prime example of a well-thought-out development that meets the issues that were raised by the public and the planning, to find a happy medium, but yet make a successful use of this property. So, I believe with all the concessions that he's made and the good-faith effort by Mr. Gallo and the team, I think this is an ideal proposal for the city. You will not see an opportunity to develop that site from anybody else, because it has been dormant. And I believe that Mr. Gallo, being a significant member and entrepreneur in our community, you know that he will jump on it and develop it, just like he has done on Shaner near Hall Road. He's taken that shopping center, he's now put the development to the north. It's under construction. I see it every morning on my way to my office, and he's moving quite rapidly, and this is a very difficult time in our economy to build anything. Costs are significantly high, labor is tremendously short and lacking, but yet he forges ahead and he produces products that are significant and very worthwhile. So, we encourage you to look at this very carefully, and we're very respectful of the citizens in Sterling Heights. Their comments have been well-taken, and we feel very comfortable that we have addressed those concerns. And after a significant debate with Planning Commission, they did recommend approval, which we were very happy to have, but that was a united effort from everyone involved to get to that point. So, we're here to answer any questions. From a technical aspect, we have our team here, and Mr. Gallo and myself would be more than happy to answer anything. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gallo, anything, or just available for questions?
We're available to answer questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this time, I'll go to the audience. I assume there'll be a number of people who want to talk, which is fine. Everyone will have an opportunity to talk. For those who may not have a lot of experience at our council meetings, we do have a four-minute time limit. When you come up to the podium, there'll be a green light that's on, there's a running clock. When it gets to one minute of time left, it'll go to yellow light, and then when your time's up, it'll go red, and I'll let you finish up your comments. You're free to speak on any item as to this proposal that you want, and you're free to use your time however you want. I will tell you that from my experience, if there's just repetitive, the same things over and over, it sort of loses its influence. So, if you can try to keep your comments fresh and say something new from the last speaker, that's usually the most helpful way of doing it, but again, it's completely up to you how you want to use your time tonight. So, who would like to go first? Okay, I'll take you, sir.
Good evening, council and mayor. According to City Ordinance 278, the intent of planned unit development, PUD, is to encourage innovation and efficient land use through regulatory flexibility. I like that term, regulatory flexibility. If that means allowing a developer to be noticeably deficient in meeting code standards, then I guess this very bloated PUD qualifies. The main purpose of building codes is to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. If council allows this proposal to go forward as it is, you will be doing a great disservice to potential future renters and all the citizens of the surrounding neighborhood. So, what are the code deficiencies of Sterling Landings III? All you have to do is read the info packet attached to this night's agenda. For an apartment of this size, of course, Mr. McLeod said, code says you need 144 parking spaces. This plan has only 111, and has also eliminated the recreational vehicle parking. I guess renters and their guests will have to park in the neighboring courts and buy the pancake pantry, and I suspect we may even see some fine recreational vehicles in front of Howard's Fine Jewelry. The required recreational space, as well as general open space, is also not up to code. I could go on about issues of setback in traffic, but I think the most troubling aspect of this plan is its lack of human space. Again, referring to the attached info packet, it says, "This proposed plan exceeds typical permitted density by almost three times." Simply put, this plan is squeezing too many people into too little space. In renter reviews of Sterling Landings 1 and 2, the most frequent complaint deals with paper-thin walls and the resulting lack of privacy. As one renter said, "I could hear my neighbor snoring through the wall." This plan would create a rabbit warrant of little ticky-tacky boxes severely lacking in privacy. To permit this to go forward would, in my opinion, be nothing short of criminal. Speaking of crime, I fear that the proposed Sterling Landings III will follow the pattern of Sterling Landings 1 and 2. Between January 1 of 2021 and February 14 of this year, there were 577 police responses to Sterling Landings 1 and 2. Reported criminal activity included assaults, domestic violence, destruction of property, car thefts, abandoned autos, larceny, fraud, shots fired, and indecent exposure, just to name a few. Oh, and of course, there was that murder a couple of years back. Interestingly, in that same period, there were 169 police responses to Maple Grove Apartments, which are just next door. I suspect environment has a lot to do with it, too many people in too little space. When you exceed critical mass, explosive things happen. Tellingly, when I discussed my FOIA request on police responses to Sterling Landings 1 and 2, the officer at the desk smiled and said, "Yeah, we have a lot of problems with that place." In summary, the plan for Sterling Landings Phase 3 does not meet code in so many important ways. I don't believe this property is suitable for any apartment complex, but if you feel compelled to let it go forward, at least insist that the petitioner come close to meeting the code requirements that are there for the public's safety. To do so otherwise would demonstrate that you are truly beholding to wealthy special interests, in this case, Mr. Gallo and Gallo Companies, that over the years have donated thousands of dollars in campaign funds to members of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would like to be next?
Hello. My name is Anita Znoy. I'm his better half, and his name is Joseph. I just have a funny little story to tell you. As a woman of a certain age, has anyone here on this council tried or watched anybody try to fit into a girdle, otherwise known as a spank? You take a few minutes, you get the spank on, you have your hair done, your nails done, you're looking really svelte and beautiful in that dress. You go out to the ceremony, you're doing fine. You get to the food, and all of a sudden, you can't eat. And then you get to the drinking, and all of a sudden, you get really hot and sweaty. And the only thing you want to do is stop dancing, go home, and take off those spanks. And don't even mention to me about taking the spanks off to go to the bathroom and then trying to put them back on before you leave the building. So, this particular proposal that has been brought forth, it feels to me like you're trying to take an X-size large Anita and fit her into a medium spank. And I just think that there's just not enough space, and when the spanks come off, the fat goes flying everywhere. So, I just want you to understand that I just feel that there's not enough people's space. There's not enough space for these residents that are going to be there. And thank you for your time, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Who'd like to be next? I'll take you first, sir. Yep. I guess I did ask for people to have original comments. I don't know.[1558.48][1558.48](laughter). If somebody else does the spanks argument, I'm going to say, "No, we already heard that one." Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Steve Callens. I live at 34429 Daventry Court. I've come to these meetings and planned it, but I have to agree with my predecessors that, yes. What I look at, though, is the environmental impact of this. It's a lot more, we already have flood problems in that area. We already have sewage problems going into the red run there, numerous, and to throw, what, 300 more toilets in a 1A compared to if you were to put a different type of office or whatever, and then to have all that vehicle traffic, you know, 24/7 as opposed to a business, which it was originally supposed to be, that would be during business hours, most likely. I just hope that you deeply consider that the wildlife is necessary and to have a little breathing room, and this is totally contradictory to urban planning, and it also, what happens to the parcel to the north? Does that become the last parcel so he can link the two to have that driveway? Because there's no main entrance to Sterling Landings. You have to cut through shopping centers and Tim Hortons parking lots, so there's no main entrance to the other facilities, which it seems like this is going to be that eventually, you know? I don't know if he's trying to acquire AT&amp;T or what's going, I'm just, and I'm just saying that it has to be considered for the long term, because we already have flooding problems. It's all, it's a mess, but they're doing better. I mean, we have the retention pond, they've been doing the infrastructure, repaving roads and so on. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you again, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. I'll stay on my left. You, sir, in the back? Yep?
Evening, ladies. I live on Ford in Amsterdam. I was against this when we came in, in the planning meeting. I seem bound and determined to push this project through. It seems like we're trying to put five pounds of apples in a two-pound bag. I'll cut a lot of other things out, because this gentleman very eloquently stated, "There's going to be a lot of problems, increased crime. Statistics show our property values will drop." Why should our property values drop for his benefit? No offense, Mr. Gallo. Why should we have to put up with that? Number two is the traffic. I brought this up at the planning meeting, that you're going to have, on Amsterdam, there's many a time during the day where traffic is backed up past 4. People can't get out of 4, they can't pull in driveways, get out of their driveways. With this increased traffic, it's going to be even worse. Then one of the planning members said, "Well, we can, it's zoned office building. We can put an office building in there. Put an office building in there. We'll have traffic 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, maybe traffic on Saturday, no traffic on Sunday. With the apartments, we got 24/7, and I don't think it's needed, and I don't think we should have to suffer for a development. Put an office building in there. Put something in there like that. Go from there." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am?
Carmela Lacamari. I live on Chatsworth Drive. She stole my clothing.
I ran apartment community homes, from as little as 50 homes to as large as 1,000. It does not belong in a residential facility. I ran one in Rochester that was in a residential, it was 15, I'm sorry, 575 units. Neighborhood was across the street. If you think that he has enough parking, he doesn't. Complaints that I would come in, getting in from the neighbors across the street who were taxpay homeowners. People illegally parking. Parties going on. Music. Traffic nonetheless. The parking along Irving, the parking along the side streets is going to happen. There is not enough parking in there for at least one parking space per apartment. Nowadays, for folks to save money in a two-bedroom apartment, I'll guarantee you, there's going to be over two bodies per bedroom, which means you're gonna have an average of anywhere between four to five people residing in that apartment. Again, 18 years I ran. The crime, it's already been mentioned. The murder happened, the carjacking happened. Last week, I just received a notification from Ring that a gentleman was trying to open doors. Literally, you see him trying to physically open doors. Another one, two weeks prior, was seeing, trying to break into vehicles. 36 years I've lived in this city, my family, my entire family has. I have never had so many cameras up in my house since Phase 1 and Phase 2 has come up. I'm glad that the Vibe Credit Union doesn't get robbed anymore, and the houses don't get set on fire anymore. But this is not the place for it. It is not. This is a residential, and with the exception, I think, of one council person. I get it, it's not your neighborhood, so you may not be too concerned about it, but we are. I have to walk in that neighborhood with my animals. My neighbors have to walk in that neighborhood with their children. It doesn't belong there. Having no staff on site at all is the craziest thing ever. Again, 18 years I ran a property. I've even lived on some of those properties. My job literally was 24/7. People knocking on my door, saying, "This is happening." Trying to contain it. You have no staff on site, no management, no nothing. How do you think it's gonna get controlled there? It's not. I left property management, that I loved finding people's homes after 18 years, because of developers like Gallo. Because they didn't have the concerns of the folks around them. The only concern that they had was their bottom line, which I get it, he's a businessman, he needs to put food on the table for his family. But not at the expense of my safety nor my neighbor's safeties. There's a whole parking lot across the street that has been vacant for practically 20 years. He's building one in a parking lot right now, he can go across the street and build there. He knew, purchasing that development, what size it was. I can't fit into a size zero. He shouldn't be able to fit that there either.
Anyone else on my left want to speak? Okay, I moved to my center. Anybody in the center portion want to speak? Mr. Smith?
Good evening. Paul Smith. I live on Utica Road at the moment. I moved in here in 1977, when Sterling Heights used to be a residential suburb, and people like myself moved here to get out of the inner city and not have our city, our suburb made into an inner city, and that's what's going on right here. We're building a pyramid on a stack of variances. I've watched a presentation. I don't think there's an ordinance, a law, or a code or a variance that's not being violated in this. This is totally illegal in every way, but you're gonna use your powers to make the laws and the codes and the ordinances go away, and as always, give Mr. Agarri and his clients whatever they want. I know, Mr. Rouski, this is boring, but maybe you could at least look at the speaker. Mrs. Schmidt, Mr. Yanez, I know this is boring stuff, sitting through public comment and giving the developer anything he wants, which we've seen it, meeting after meeting, we go through this charade. Well, public comment means you listen to the neighbors, you listen to the people. You don't just sit through them, you consider what they want. And these people moved into a residential suburb, and you're putting a high-rise, high-density development in with them. There's no room to park, there's no recreation, there's no place to put the snow. You're gonna have conflict, confusion, chaos, crime, and killing in here. It's lucky that we've hired a lot of police and fire, because they're gonna have a lot of work when these people in these jail cell apartments start bumping up against each other. We moved here to have a front yard and a backyard and a parking lot, live in the suburbs, and not have Sterling Heights turned into Hong Kong or Newark. Now, nobody's gonna see any money changing hands. There's nobody satchels of money handed around, but selling out the city developers is pretty obvious what's happening and why, and it's gonna happen again, but at least you won't be able, are you with me, Mrs. Rouski? Thank you.
Mr. Smith, please direct your.
I mean, you know, well, I mean, I just, I hate to see council visibly acting so bored with this charade, but it's gonna go through, but at least you can't say that nobody said anything.
Anyone else in the center portion? Mr. Nelson?
I want to thank all the people that showed up. This is the first time this year that I've spoke at the city council meeting, and I was the only one to speak. So, Mr. Taylor, there are people that are concerned about this project. I want to bring up the issues of planned unit development. It was brought up a little bit earlier about the intent, but the use is permitted. The PUD must provide a complementary variety of housing types and/or a complementary mixed-use plan of residential and/or non-residential uses that is harmonious with adjacent development. It's a must. It's not a shall, or will be, or whatever. The, one thing that I'm not sure of, the maximum permitted densities within the PUD shall be governed by the zoning district in which it is located, which is an O2. I don't know how that works, so maybe you can ask him to explain that. This is a PUD. I don't think it qualifies as a PUD, and one of the reasons that I believe it is a PUD is that the city council may increase, decrease, waive, and otherwise modify the current standards within the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to use, density, intensity, setbacks, building heights, parking, design standards, project. So basically, you can throw all this stuff that the planning commission did, you can throw it all out the window if you wanted to. One thing that I'm really, it was a 5-3 vote that came out of, and I went to that planning commission meeting. 5-3 vote? 5-3 is not 7-0, or 8-0, excuse me. And the one I was really concerned about was, it states in the backup material, "The Office of Planning is recommending approval." And one of the reasons is, "The planning commission recommended the approval, and the council's recent interest in providing additional housing opportunities within the city to address an underserved housing market." I think that came from you, Mr. Taylor. If anybody gets a chance, look at Mr. Taylor's rant at the June 7th meeting, where he says any apartments that want to be built in Sterling Heights can be, as long as we run out of space. If that's what you want, that's what you got. The other issues, this is not a, not a normal situation to plug in apartments. I believe there's five courts going, running down Irving that empty into Irving. Plus, all this stuff from the apartments, to giving up parking spaces. I agree with the lady that just spoke a little while ago, there's no place to put snow. How many, how many spaces are going to be used to push snow? All of these units and these projects that Mr. Gallo is proposing are in the middle of concrete. The whole thing is on the outskirts, concrete, concrete in. This building is not 219 feet long. It's continuous. So there's a fire, and these are gonna be wood construction. I understand we gotta follow the code. That's a whole big building going up. Think about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else? Ms. Wright?
Mayor, city council, it's good to see you again. I know I missed some meetings. So I do actually agree with Mr. Nelson. I know that's rare. Don't give me that look, Mr. Radke. I don't really think that this fits as a PUD, and I don't understand why it didn't go through just a traditional rezoning. I think the city maybe needs to do a better job of weeding out some of these applicants and letting them know when perhaps they're not fitting in with what the PUD should be, and maybe sending them over into a better way of presenting these to the planning commission. I also want to say, maybe, I think Mr. Radke touched on this last meeting, looking at our zoning maps in general, I think the last time they were looked at was 1989, if I remember our materials, and maybe some of these issues wouldn't come up if we maybe updated those. Now, going to this PUD, as others have said, it is deficient in some landscaping. I think the building is way too long. Perhaps if some of the length was cut off, that would increase the recreation space, which would make me more comfortable with the density that the development has. I do want to mention the crime. I know Mr. Gallo has taken a lot of steps in Sterling Landings 1 and 2 to try and lessen the instances of crime in that development. I think before we give this a go-ahead, I would like to see a comparison of the police call-outs since he implemented the flock camera systems and all the other things he did versus before, because I would like to know if crime really has decreased that much. I know that I've lived in apartment complexes, many, over multiple different states, and none of them ever had any type, near the type of crime that Mr. Gallo's complex does, because if they did, I wouldn't live there, especially for the rent that he's charging. So I, I think the problem isn't that inherently apartment complexes allow crime. I think it's management. I think it's the way that business is conducted. If you're not doing the background checks, if you don't know who's living in your apartment complex, if you don't have people that, you know, are property managers or working for you, living in those complexes, like one of the women said. Every complex I've lived in, somebody is on that property 24/7. They live there, they know what's going on. I know he mentioned during the planning commission that no one would actually be at Sterling Landings 3, since the property management and everything will be at 1 and 2. So you're essentially leaving this building pretty much alone with no oversight, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I remember. I also do want to ask, I think from the meeting I wrote, the planning commission meeting, I wrote that the average rent, he had stated, because he decreased the building from 84 to 64 units, it was going to increase to about $1,500 a month. I'm just wondering, who is going to be willing to pay that amount for 1 and 2-bedroom apartments? It seems a little exorbitant. And since you like all the interesting little, you know, spanks comments and everything, I've noticed with Mr. Gallo's presentations when he comes, he brings, it's really big, it's really oversized when he first shows it, and you're just like, "Oh, my God, that's crazy." And so then when he decides to scale back, you think it's the most amazing thing ever. It's sort of like if the doctor came to me and said, "I have to cut off your leg," I'd freak out, but then if he goes, "Oh, well, never mind, I just have to cut off your toe," I'd be like, "Okay, go ahead, take that toe right now." And that sort of seems like what Mr. Gallo does. He presents a very big proposal, and then when he scales back, you think it's great, and you end up approving it every single time. And I think that's something that we need to take notice and think about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nick Mills. I just wanted to talk to you, just as one of the residents that lives on Davenport Court, that'll be, it's the street that that property is bordering. I'm actually in the second house on the street, so the apartment building, if it is built, will be right next to my backyard. Just, pretty much the main concern I have is just the size of the building there, that close to my house and my two neighbors on either side of my houses, will literally have a two-story building looking into my bedroom window and my bathroom window, if it's built there. My wife and my three kids and I moved to Sterling Heights at the beginning of 2018, and we've liked living here so far. I know it's a piece of private property that will eventually be developed at some point. I understand none of us own it or anything like that, but I just really want you to consider the size of that building that close to these houses, especially my house and the neighbors on either side of my house. And then also, I was gonna bring that point up as well, just try not to think about the original plan that was proposed in the beginning. It's really the final plan that counts. I know that they decreased the size of it and decreased the number of living spaces and stuff, but really still, it is too big of a building to be there. There's not nearly enough green space, not nearly enough trees, so just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Hi, thank you. My name's Kevin Cece. I live on Esper Drive. I don't want to sound redundant like everyone else, but there's a couple of things that really stick out, is that the planning, they brought up about the camera system, about the crimes that's going on there. So what kind of concerns me is, I don't hear about these cameras at any other apartment complex. So it makes you wonder, what kind of tenants are we drawing into this complex, that we, that they need these special cameras for crime? Because you don't hear about the other places. That's number one. And number two, if you look, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're asking for a 22-foot setback from Irving to the front of the building, and if you look, that's like from these seats to the back wall. That's nothing. That's short. And that's a big building in a little area that's blending into a subdivision. And then, to answer one of your questions, Mr. Taylor, I saw your speech, it was pretty, for the last meeting about apartments. This doesn't have anything to do about apartments, but to answer your question, who's this gonna hurt? As you can see by all the people who showed up, it feels, they feel that this project's gonna hurt them. So that's all I have, but thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Yackaby. Send me live on Colonial Court. I wasn't planning on saying anything. I hadn't come here for that. My son's actually doing something for Boy Scouts, and he has to be at a council meeting, so we came for that, but we live, we live right there. And I did send an email when it first came out to everyone on the council with our opposition to this. My biggest question, and I know they can't answer right now, but mine's more of a question is, for Mr. Gallo and the rest of the crew that had worked on this, how would you feel if this was your house? If this was your subdivision, would you want that building and all those people right there in your subdivision? What is gonna happen to the parking? Are they gonna be allowed to park on Irving Road? What's gonna happen with the snow and the other things people have talked about? But my biggest question is, how would you feel if this was your subdivision? No, our houses might not be the $500,000 or $1 million homes that you live in, but it is gonna change the value of our homes. It's gonna change, we move there for the school that isn't there anymore, and for the nice community. It's a wonderful walking community. That's gonna change. I won't let my son ride his bike and... Boy Scouts. He has been at a council meeting, so, we came for that, but we live, we live right there. And I did send an email when it first came out to everyone on the council with our opposition to this. My biggest question, and I know they can't answer right now, but mine's more of a question, is, for Mr. Gallo and the rest of the crew that had worked on this, how would you feel if this was your house? If this was your subdivision, would you want that building and all those people right there in your subdivision? What is gonna happen to the parking? Are they gonna be allowed to park on Irving Road? What's gonna happen with the snow and the other things people have talked about? But my biggest question is, how would you feel if this was your subdivision? No, our houses might not be the $500,000 or $1 million homes that you, like, live in, but it is gonna change the value of our homes. It's gonna change. We move there for the school that isn't there anymore, and for, for the nice community. It's a wonderful walking community. That's gonna change. I won't let my son ride his bike anymore off our street. There's no way. The cars that go up and down the street, how fast they go, which I know is in most subs nowadays, but it's just, it's too much. And this many people on that small of a space, like other people have said, it's too many people, too big of a, too big of a building on a small piece of property, and with only a 22-foot setback, a little scary.[624.22][624.22](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the middle section? Now, I'll move on to my right. Anyone in the right side for me? Come on up, whoever, whoever wants to be first.
My name is Dion Kropinski, and I live on Sebastian Lane. I have attended, um, all the Planning Commission, um, meetings regarding this property, and I've been listening to the city council meetings. Um, and I heard what you said about having affordable housing for everybody. Um, I think Sterling Heights has done a good job in regarding that in the sense of apartments. Um, if you notice, and I checked, um, between 14 and 16 Mile Road, there's double the amount of apartment complexes that there are further, um, north of 16 Mile Road. I have children that had grew up in this area, and, uh, they would not ever pay, um, for rent. Um, they would like to own, like, a condominium. So, I don't understand, we have tons of apartment complexes, but we hardly have any nice, affordable condominiums. I don't understand why, in these areas that are small, in residential areas, why it has to be apartments. Um, and of course, I would like to see my children stay in this area, but of course, they're not going to, because they don't want to spend 13,000, I'm, uh, 1,300, I'm sorry, for rent, when they could put that to own something. So, when you say about affordable, uh, housing for everybody, our kids grew up in this neighborhood, and it is a nice neighborhood. And I understand that a lot of these residents were here for the other meetings, and we were opposed to this. And I don't know how this all works, because I listened to, two weeks ago, the city council meeting, and I guess the Planning Commission denied, um, him, uh, making a apartment complex on Shaner and 14 Mile Road area, but it still went in front of you guys, to the council. And you, um, then you were surprised that there wasn't a lot of residents at the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago that lived by that area. Well, I would have taken it as, okay, the Planning Commission said no to it. Why would it, why would I need to go to the city council meeting for another development that was already denied? But, again, that's on a Shaner, right off the road. This is right within the residential area. It's not off a main road. And, um, again, I just would like to see housing as a house or as a condominium area. I, as a resident and a homeowner, I have to get permits. I have to abide by the ordinance of the city. I have to do all that. So, if I have to do that, and I'm gonna try to do that, why is it that a commercial, we can put this in there, which is not supposed to be for apartments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.[865.41][865.41](APPLAUSE) Come on up, whoever would like to be next.
Good evening. My name is Billy Wood. I live at 33568 Sebastian Lane. Excuse me, I have allergies. Uh, I'm here, and I have an emphasis I'd like to place is on the children. When I first moved here, there was one child on my block. It was an 11-year-old boy. I can now name you 20 children on my block. I'm delighted. I love them. It's great. It's a wonderful new atmosphere. Where do they go? They go up to Fillmore, which is now a great place. They still have the swings. They have the monkey bars, if that's what they're even called these days. Um, the people are walking their dogs there. It's, it's great. But I was so insulted when about three weeks or, or a month ago, they had the front page of the local paper was a big picture of, "Hooray, we're gonna put a park at where Fill- Fillmore is, and we're gonna build an apartment." So, the children now, who must cross the street from the subdivision into that park, are in danger of their lives every day. We already get a plethora of, of traffic that goes from 15 Mile, as soon as it backs up, they cut through to go to 14, or 14 to 15. They go 50 miles an hour down my street, and I'm not exaggerating. It's, it's pitiful. It's scary, and it isn't even affecting me directly. Uh, my ex-husband served on the charter commission for this to become a city. I first li- lived in the north, and I remember going to city council meetings, and people from the south would say, "The north gets everything. We don't get, we get ignored totally." I, you know, I kind of wondered, you know, is that true? I dismissed it pretty much, cause I lived in the north. I now live in the south end, and I have to tell from my perspective, it's true. We don't get what the north gets, in my opinion. We start to fix a street, they fix one-third of it, they don't come back for five years. My, one-third of my street has been fixed for five years, and, and the rest is a mess. Nothing but potholes. So, I don't, I don't understand it. Um, when I bought my house in the north, there was a big empty lots in, down the street. We said, "Well, what's that gonna be?" They said, "It's zoned, light, commercial." Okay, we'll deal with that. That's okay. All of a sudden, we got a huge, great, big house, quarter-mile racetrack, a cabana, a swimming pool, tennis courts. What? An individual. I'm sure you know the name. You probably all know it. He ended up in jail, but nevertheless, you know, my kids are riding by, "Hey, Mom, where's our swimming pool? Where's our tennis courts? Where's our cabana and our horse?" We were lied to. So, you wonder why people get upset with the government. And I keep trying to defend it. I keep saying, "We are the government. We put these people where they are." And I'm delighted to see Mr. Yanis. Nice to see you. And Ms. Schmidt, I must say, you as well, cause you stood up for me when I was here a few years ago complaining about being able to walk into Sterling Heights High. Nobody stopped me. Nobody. I had complete rule. You know what? You, you, you told me as a council that you had no jurisdiction over the superintendent of schools. I immediately called him the next day. I told him what had happened, how furious I was. You know what he said? "I'm not the least bit concerned." I said, "You have no police there? Nobody at the door?" "No," he says, "I'm not concerned." Do you know how many mass murders there's been at schools since that day? How do we get rid of a man like this? I, that's another issue. I'll come back another time.[1127.14][1127.14](LAUGHTER)
We've got enough on our plate.
But it is the children that I am concerned about, because they deserve to have this happiness that they are enjoying.
I understand.
And hopefully, they will continue to be able to do so. If you go down 15 Mile...
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to stop you there, okay?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it.[1150.42][1150.42](APPLAUSE) Yes, sir?
I'm, uh, my name's Pat DeLeone. I'm one of the three houses that the, we're the half-house, actually. There's one house, and then my neighbor Nick, who just spoke a little while ago, he's one of the houses. I'm the half-house. Um, and my wife said, "Get up there and say something." So, I'm gonna say something. Um, I, I, I run, uh, for exercise. I run every street. I run, I've run every inch of that subdivision, and I see how bad the traffic is, how crazy the cars go through there, as it is. And it's not the fault of, it's just bad drivers and, and people looking to cut through that area. And I remember, uh, in the first planning meeting, they were talking about how they would, you know, "Well, we'll put a sign up on the front saying, 'No left turn,' and then no one will go there." And it's not, that's obviously not gonna happen. Traffic is horrible. Uh, my neighbor's got three little kids, and my boys have grown up now, and, and I don't worry about them so much, but, you know, kids, they, they go out and they, they want to be able to walk around. They want to be able to, uh, to be kids, and cars are flying everywhere. So, my, my main concern about this thing is the tra- just the traffic. There's a million concerns that I have, but the traffic is gonna be horrific. I mean, I, I can guarantee it. There's, you can't, I've, it's bad already, and it's only gonna get way worse. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm on every road when I'm out running, and I, I'm screaming at cars, cause I know they're going over 40 miles an hour, you know? Not that I can run that fast, but, you know, thank God I can't. Thank God for them. Um, so, that's my concern. I, it's, uh, I, the, I know the laundry list is long, and I'm not gonna touch on everybody else's things, but all I think about is all these kids that are out on the sidewalks, and they're playing, and they're doing this. And when you add that many more cars, man, it's, it's, that's just a recipe for disaster. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir.[1277.48][1277.48](APPLAUSE) Anyone else on my right? If not, yes, ma'am. Come on up.
My name is Nancy Hoffman, and I live at 8261 Denwood Drive, number 6. Um, I didn't have any reservations before I, prior to this meeting. I just wanted to state an opinion of the area around Fillmore. When Fillmore was in, people didn't speed, because there was usually one or two cop cars around to get people who wouldn't, who would speed, to get them a ticket. Since Fillmore's been gone, all of that's gone. The two-way sign that used to say where you could pa- where you could turn right or left is gone, to tell you that you can't do this from 2 to 4 during the day on Monday to Friday. So, I honestly, listening to everyone today, I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant at putting this thing in. If they're gonna police it better and have a live person there, that might give me a little sway towards saying, "I would agree with it." But, I, I feel for the people in this area, that they have a point. And I hope the city council takes their points that they've given you today and thinks about what they're gonna do, because everyone has their opinions, and they're valid. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.[1386.71][1386.71](APPLAUSE) Okay, anyone else, uh, from the audience who has not spoken, that wants to speak? Okay. I will close the public hearing. And council, we need a motion. Counsel, is there anyone who will make a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to deny the application by Phil Regery for and on behalf of Tony Gallo and Sterling Landings 3 LLC for the multifamily residential planned unit development on approximately 2.25 acres of land situated on the north side of Irving Road, east of Van Dyke, PU- PPUD 21-0002, subject to the terms and conditions sent forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all doc- documents required in conjunction with this approval with this denial. No, that wouldn't add, you have to sign anything. Done.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Well, um, I wasn't prepared to talk first, but I know you're gonna give me a second chance, so I'm gonna go. Um, first of all, I'm gonna say, Mr. Gallo does provide a good product when he builds his apartments. There's no denying that. I wish that he would build the ones like he's got, no, or behind Costco, where it's the apartment community, where it's, you know, ranches with garages. I think those are really good. Um, and I'd like to see more of those in the city. But, um, and I'll even say, yes, we do need housing. That is, it's across the, it's across the country. We do need housing. Um, there's not enough of it. So, there's a lot of things that were said tonight that, um, I, I agree with. I just think that this is too much in a small place. Um, well, another thing that concerns me is the parcel that's north of this, and what happens if, you know, Mr. Gallo acquires that parcel, and another set of apartments goes in there, and then where would they have the ingress and egress? So, it's another one of my concerns, cause it's the unknown. The Ring Alerts, I live at 15 and Shaner, I get the Ring Alerts for what goes on at Sterling Landing. So, I understand what you're saying, um, about what happens there. Um, and another thing, I'm gonna tell you a positive, because listening to the news, I mean, it's not that, you know, um, I don't want to see apartments. It's nothing like that. I just think this particular, um, development is too much in a small area. Um, that, the research tells you that the people that move into these apartments actually live in your community already. They're not coming from somewhere else. Just like the, I think the mom that came up, um, was Mrs. Kaminsky. Yes. And she said that she would like to see, you know, condos instead of apartments. I have to agree with you. I think when you have some skin in the game, you take better care of what you have. So, and I have a daughter or two that wants to go into a condo, but wants to do it in Sterling Heights. So, I completely understand with what you're saying. Um, so, yes, it's like, those are, those are the people that move into these, uh, different developments. But, I think the biggest thing here is, I know what the traffic and the cut-through is like in that area already. I, you know, it's, uh, I've done it myself. I can say that I, when I worked at St. Anne's, and, uh, traffic was backed up, I would, you know, um, go down Amsterdam to Irving to, what is it, Chatham, and then over and probably Sebastian Lane to go, and to get out onto 14. So, I mean, I know exactly how the cut-through went. Um, so, to see, you know, at least, at least another 60 vehicles coming in there, maybe not all at the same time, but, um, I just, it's not that I, I even like the layout of it. I just think it's too much on, too small a pro- a piece of property. So, that's what I have to say, and I might ask for a return.
Okay. Um, was it Mr. Yanis? Give you a chance. Do you wanna speak?
Um, not at this time, Mr.-
Okay. Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, I would love to be able to support this, but I have to agree with Mrs. Zarco. And I really, I love the Gallows. I, I love their products. I love what they do, but I think that this is, I love the Spanx comment. I've tried to get into a median myself. Nuh-uh. Nuh-uh. Not doing it. Um, but, and yes, Mr. Smith, I was researching, so thank you for bringing, um, my, the attention to me. I like the attention, but to take the attention off of you, I was researching while I was not ignoring any resident. I hear your comments, and I understand. I love, um, I came, I grew up in a very small town that did not have any, um, housing for apartment dwellers. And when we, we left high school, and if we weren't going off to college, and we weren't, we couldn't afford a, 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 something, we didn't have a lot, lot of choices. So, I, apartment dwelling is usually where people go, but if, if we can't afford the apartments, where do you go? So, condos are great. My kids are looking. I have got two in my house right now that need to go. And I would like them to be able to afford a, a nice affordable house, or a condo, or apartment. So, we need them. But I would, I would really, um, recommend that we use these empty parking lots, grind them up. Let's find what we can do on them. Maybe we can find those, find them to be affordable. I would, I would like to see that used, as opposed to using the, what little tree lots we have left. That might be an option. I would love to be able to support this. I know this has been, was on our initial plan for Sterling Landings, but I don't think that right now, this is where we need to go. And I really do listen to our residents, and I do change my mind at times. I, I, when things aren't right, they're not right. I, when things aren't right, they're not right. And I think right now this is not right. And I wish I could find the way, I would love to be able to say this is right, but it's not. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. At the mo, at this time, it's just too dense. And when residents move in in a highly dense area, they're going to often bring kids, there's no place for the kids. I was commenting driving up Dodge Park, leaving my favorite Coney Island restaurant on Sunday, looking at some of the apartments that are right there at Dodge and 15. And this man was playing on the sidewalk with his daughter because there's no place for them to play there. And I thought, boy, that's sad that they're going to have, they have to play on the sidewalk. And my husband says to me, well, they didn't have to put in a play area then. And I thought, well, you know what? They do now, but we have to make sure that it stays. So this is just an example of where we have to continue to maintain that. So, right now, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sirovsky. Counsel, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I have to agree with the motion to deny tonight. The, the safety concerns of added traffic into that neighborhood, I unfortunately am a cut-through word to all these. But I do, the speed limit, I promise. You know, I think the difference, and someone brought it up, because I was thinking about the Shaner development, which should not enter into this decision at all. But the difference for me is, this is within a neighborhood. This is not on Shaner Road. And to me, that is really a deciding factor. The safety, the snow removal, some things that were brought up today, I really didn't even think about. And parking, where are people going to park when 111 parking spots are not enough when you have visitors? I just think there's a lot of issues with this property, and if it, if we want, if it wants to be developed as O2, I don't think the neighborhoods have a problem with that. But having this dense of a development in a neighborhood, or on the edge of a neighborhood, going into a neighborhood, I think will cause more problems. So I cannot support this at this time. I support the motion to deny. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mrs. Schmidt, Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a little, a lot of things to say, I guess, so I'm going to try to organize my notes. I'm against this project, but I'm not against this project for a lot of the reasons the residents have spoken about. I agree that we need more housing in Sterling Heights. I'm one of its biggest proponents. I believe we need more density in some areas of Sterling Heights. I'm against this project because of its design. The building is long, there is no recreation space, 7,500 square feet versus the 32,000 in ordinance. There are no trees. It's almost a building in the middle of a parking lot. And I live in a condo complex here in Sterling Heights, and one thing the ownership group is fighting about right now is whether kids can play on the grass, where can the kids play in the complex? Because supposedly, when it was created, there weren't a lot of kids living in these complexes, but now, in my complex, we have quite a few. And there is no place for them really to play. Now, there's a park down the way, hopefully, in the future, but I think you've got to have something on your, outside your back door. And one thing I look at with this site, and I'm looking at the overhead plan, is there are no trees screening it. At least when you go to some of the complexes, Fairway Greens, Seville Gardens, or even some more in Dodge Park, they have large trees. They plant trees to kind of put a canopy in front of the building. Here, it's almost like a building that's going to be in the direct sun all day long, another impermeable parking lot, where they're going to have runoff and water problems, and just more stormwater runoff. And it kind of goes against all of this, and I've talked to Ms. Koski earlier about this, all the sustainability mission that we have been talking about here in Sterling Heights, to create a greener, more sustainable community for the future. And this just seems like a big building we're just going to toss down into a parking lot. So I'm for more density. I would love to see this turned into, I think Mrs. Zarco makes a great point, you know, townhomes or ranch homes. I really do believe in ownership society. I think that when you give someone an opportunity to buy a place, they're buying into the community. And I think, no matter what people say, people in my generation, I'm 37, they want a place to own. They don't want a place to rent. Right now, they're renting because they can't own. I just got outbid on a property in Sterling Heights on my dad's block, on Hannah, because it went over for $300,000 for a ranch. And they're just keep on creeping up, keep on creeping up. So I understand wanting to buy something more. And if Mr. Gallo brought this back as condos or town, you know, townhouses or any other concept, I think I'd be more amenable to it. And more than that, this was zoned mixed-use. And Ms. Wright makes a great point that I've been making, thank you, Ms. Wright, for a while, which is that we need to update our zoning maps, which were last updated in the 80s. Because we have these situations with these PUDs and these rezonings that come through because our master plan does not match our zoning map. And if this is rezoned as a master plan as a mixed-use area, there is nothing mixed-use about this development. People seem to be taking mixed-use as, I can toss an RM2 or RM3 high-density building, and that's just mixed-use. Well, mixed-use actually being, bringing commercial and residential onto the same site. You know, and I think this would be a great place for an ice cream stand, or any other kind of thing that could add to the community. Especially if we do end up purchasing Fillmore Elementary, making it a public park, this would be a tremendous asset to the neighborhood. I know this neighborhood. My brother went to Fillmore. I did not grow up in this neighborhood, but I moved here when I was 13. This is where my father lives, in this neighborhood. So I know this, this, like the back of my hand. We can do better here. And I want Mr. Gallo to do better, because I want something that the residents can both be proud of, and that will meet some of our housing needs, and fulfill the mixed-use requirement. Because we've zoned large swaths of the city as mixed-use, and we've yet to have one mixed-use development really start. I guess the only one is the Caldian Community Foundation that's being built on Van Dyke by, just north of 19th. That's the only one that has a true mixed-use component. So for some reason, even though we rezoned it, or not rezoned it, we master-planned it differently to Van Dyke mixed-use, we're not getting it. So we ought to do something better here to get those projects, and to turn this into true mixed-use, and a buffer zone between the commercial on Van Dyke and the residents to the east. That's all I have right now, but I might have to come back. I have a lot of stuff to look at right here. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleagues here at the table, and also the residents. My biggest concern, of course, is the big issue. Too much building, small piece of property. As Mr. Radke said, we talked about sustainability. The idea is, we're trying to preserve some of our green spaces. We're trying to do our buildings according to what the future is going to bring for our children. Looking at the aerial view of the property and the surrounding property, there's a lot of cement. There's some commercial building there. This project, the size of the building, with the parking lot, you don't have that much green space left. And that's what we're trying to achieve. That's what we've always tried to achieve here in Sterling Heights. You don't go in, remove all 125 trees, you can't even put up the 122 that you require there, and not think about what you're doing to the lot. You need to have a certain percentage, which is going to be your cement, your concrete, your building, and then the rest is supposed to be green space. The reason I say that is flooding. I noticed that there's a retention pond there, and one resident mentioned that there was an issue with flooding. If you cement the greater portion of that lot, where's the water going to go? It's going to go into somebody's basement. No. Okay. We're going to put drains in under the basement and gather all that water and funnel it to the storm drain. My point is, too much building, small piece of property. Mr. Gallo, if you choose, do a condo project, be more than happy to support that. Or do a townhouse, or something like that, owned by the purchaser, residents. You do great work, done great projects here in the city, but this is one that I cannot support. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Koski. Anyone else, counsel? Okay. So I'm not going to go and give the same speech I gave last week, because it sounds like many of you already heard it. I am personally disappointed with the way the outcome of this vote seems to be heading. We've talked about doing density. We've talked about having more housing options. We've talked about having options for people who can't own. There are people who cannot own, and it's not just because there aren't houses available. I mean, there are people that cannot come up with $50,000, $70,000, $100,000 for a down payment. There are people that cannot, will not ever qualify with the credit that they have. There are people that rely on apartments. And as much as we say, I mean, I've got to be honest, I'm really disappointed with the discussion up here, that's, like, what message are we sending to the thousands and thousands of people who rely on apartments? Like, we don't want to encourage you to be here in the city of Sterling? You know what, folks? I, I listened to a number of you come up and speak, very respectfully. And, and you're going to get your vote, so just let me have a few minutes to say what I need to say. Okay? Please. What message are we sending when the, when the elected officials of this city are pretty much saying, "We don't want apartment people, we want owner people in our community"? And I'm not, I'm just not going to go down that, that road. We have thousands of people in the city that, that contribute to the tax roll, that contribute to society, that contribute to our sense of community, that are not a danger to society. They are not derelicts, they're not criminals, they're not people who are going to run over children in the neighborhoods. And I'm disappointed with the discussion we've had up here. We've had the opportunity, we have the opportunity to start living out some of the principles we talked about, Mr. Radke. More density, more housing options. And it's, it's a bit disappointing that it's not going to come to pass. I'm also confused, we talk about building apartment complexes, and the discussion is, well, they really shouldn't be in residential areas. What do you think people do in apartments? They're residences, they're residents who live in the apartment complex, and we're saying they shouldn't be in residential areas? No, Tony, what you should do is you should build a huge massive apartment complex right in front of all your buildings at 14 Mile and Van Dyke, so nobody can see them on Van Dyke. That's what you should do. I think I heard from one of the people on the council. Who's going to do that? Who's going to build a massive apartment complex, blocking the visibility of all the tenants that are renting in that commercial area? It doesn't make sense to me. You know, I, I think that, as I said the last time, to me, we have an obligation to look at the long-term future of this city, and the long-term future of this area, and help people who need help right now. And I completely understand. I have three young children myself, and I'm telling you, a lot of me loves the winter because they come in the house straight from school, and they don't leave the house. And I know they're safe inside my house. And once the weather starts getting warm, they want to go outside, and I hear that ring, I hear my phone, the Ring Doorbell goes off 100 times a day, I kid you not, with kids coming in and out of my house. And I see them. They run right out into the sidewalk, and they don't always look both ways, and it is a problem. I get it. I understand. But these are problems that are not unique to Sterling Heights, and that are not unique to 14 and 1/2 and Van Dyke. These are problems that have been faced around the city. We can tell you, for years, the number-one complaint has been speeding in the neighborhoods, and we're doing everything that we can to get our arms around it, but thank God, it doesn't seem to be causing the major problems that are commensurate with the level of complaints. People are not going to just be driving over children in our neighborhoods if we put up one apartment building. So I think these problems can be overcome, and I, and I, I can tell you as well, having done 12 or 13 years on this council, it's very common that when there's a development that's happening around your neighborhood, that you're concerned about the change. And those, those concerns, very, very rarely, and I dare say, never, actually come to pass. That the folks, you folks in this room, there'll be a totally different group at the next meeting, whenever the wedge comes to the city council, and they'll be saying the exact same things. And then it'll be another one, and another one, and another one, because the, this housing crisis is not going away. And, my goodness, I mean, it's like, one time I went into a restaurant, I got to go to this fancy new restaurant before it opened, and, and I had a great meal, and then I wanted a coffee after dinner, and I wanted an espresso, or a cappuccino, or a coffee, and they had no coffee. So I said to the, to the owner and the chef, like 50/50 partner, and I said, you know, everything was great, but I would really have liked a coffee. And you know what he said? Well, then why don't you open up your own bleepin' restaurant? And I said, you know what? I'm sorry for saying that to you, because you're right. Like, we keep hearing, Tony, why don't you build this? Why don't you build that? Why don't you build this? There's a reason this place has sat vacant forever. I mean, like, it's like me saying to the residents, I said to one of them sort of facetiously, oh, if you don't like it, why don't you buy it? And they're like, what are you talking about? I can't pay millions of dollars for a piece of property? And, and the same is true of the development community. That developers know what the market wants, they know what the market needs, and in this area, for this piece of property, I think that an apartment complex can make sense. If you look at our community right now, most everybody I talk to, whatever neighborhood they live in, whatever corner they live in, they do not want that corner to change. And I get it. I totally, completely, 100% get it. But we could have asked that question 10 years ago, and the answer would have been the same, and 20 years ago, and 40 years ago, and 50 years ago. And every single person who lives in this community would not have been here, and would not have anywhere to live, if we made these decisions at every step of the way. I think this can work. I think it's, it's a net benefit to the community. I don't think that the problems, which I know are legitimate, and I'm not dismissing them, I'm not saying you're crazy, I'm not saying you're blowing them out of proportion, I'm not saying you don't have a right to, to, to voice them. I think we can get over the problems, and we can find a solution that benefits everybody here. That would be my vote tonight, and it will be my vote tonight. So if anybody do, does want to have some, some brief comments, they missed anything, I'll open up the floor.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
Just to clarify, I, and I was actually getting a text from a resident who's watching. Just to clarify, I don't think that anyone said that we don't want, even, and to maybe summarize the residents, the council people up here, I don't think anyone said that we don't want apartment residents in the city. I just think that they, the comments were more specific to this particular parcel, that this parcel was not conducive to the density of residents and for that specific apartment situation. And I think even Ms. Koski mentioned that maybe some condos could be built down there. So just to be clear, I'm, I'm all for apartments to be built where we could find some, a better space for them, but not specifically this particular parcel. So just clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, you know, you've called me out twice now, and I'm, I'm just going to have to respond to it very briefly. Being for more residential housing, being for more residential apartments, being for more residents in general, doesn't mean you have to say yes to every proposal that comes before you. And I think most of my colleagues up here, including myself, folks, let me just talk really quick. I evaluate every proposal that comes before me, and I don't prejudge anything. I don't say no to apartments, and yes to condos, or no to this. I really try to dig down and look at the proposal, and decide if it's something I think our community needs, if I think it's something that works, if I think it's going to fit in. And I, I think I made a case why I think that this one does not fit in. But I have voted for Mr. Gallo's proposals in the past. I have, I take everyone individually, and I will continue to take everyone individually. Because I think if we just say yes or no, we're not doing our duty up here. To evaluate each proposal as they come to us, from the comments from the Planning Commission, from the comments to the residents, to be up here. So I'm not rubber-stamp either which way. So I'm not rubber stamp either which way. I'm gonna continue to do my job, which is to evaluate the proposal, give my best feedback, and if I win a vote, I win a vote. If I lose, I lose. I don't take this personally, 'cause this is just business, I'm in the business of the citizens of the city. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? Brief follow-up?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Yeah, I was, um, yeah, it was actually, I, I passed the first time, 'cause I was hoping somebody on the, uh, opposite end of the vote would speak. Um, I didn't realize it was gonna be like this, but, um, I, I will, I will tell you this, and I appreciate what Mr. Radke just said, I, I too evaluate every single, um, proposal that comes before us. It doesn't fit. Now, I will tell you, I, I will also tell you this, I am not a master planner. I took the master planner class, but I am not a planner, um, you know, and I appreciate everything that the Planning Commission does and the work, work that they do. Um, I think I said that last meeting as well. But ultimately, what this came down to for me was the buffer between the commercial property and the residential property. And right now, it's just a field or stand of trees, which I'm sure the neighbors all, all like, and I can appreciate the reason they do, and they, I think they also realize that whoever owns this property can build what it's zoned for at some future time, and, and that's okay. But, um, I, I just wanna let Mr. Gallo and his team know, uh, the reason why I'm voting no on this particular project, is I simply believe that when we transition from a commercial to residential, there needs to be some sort of buffer other than putting a lot of people in a very small space. I don't think that's right for our city, um, uh, and it, but we do have to, and I will say, I agree with Mr. Radke on this, that we have a lot of these postage stamp-sized lots around Sterling Heights, and we're really gonna have to make a decision on how we're moving forward when it comes to, uh, developing these pieces of property, um, other than just, you know, doing these PUDs. So, um, anyways, that's all I have to say. I, I just think that it makes a poor buffer in transition from commercial to residential, and therefore, that's why I'm voting no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else? If not, uh, motion on the floor is to deny the application for the PUD. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, no, six yeses, one no. Uh, motion to deny carries. Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gallo, Mr. Ruggeri, for presentations.
Thank you all.
Uh, next up, of course, don't go anywhere, is an ordinance adoption, and this is to consider adoption of a MAP amendment to zoning ordinance, number 278, to conditionally rezone properties situated on the east side of Shana Road, between Fourteen Mile Road and Fifteen Mile Road in section thirty-six from O-1, Business and Professional Office District to RM Three Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise District, case number PZ two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-two. Uh, anything tonight, Mr. McLeod?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions for me from, uh, from council's perspective.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Nelson.
A lot was said earlier, um, and it kind of applies right here. There's a piece of property that's currently zoned, uh, O-1, and we take and we put parking all the way out to the lot lines, and then we put in the center, whatever it is that we have to do. This is, this is a rezoning request. You don't have to do this. This is the developer saying that this is what he, he will do, and this is what he wants to be approved on to move forward. It's three-story, it doesn't fit right there, I don't, you know, the old thing, the old adage, i-if you can give me a little bit of, of space, he developed every, every bit of it. And again, there was a comment earlier about, uh, the more that we, that we, uh, push the issue, the less units we had. Well, if it's a rezoning request, and it goes to RM Three, then it needs to have a project that fits the RM Three zoning without variances. Again, I'm glad this wasn't a PUD, but rezoning request, it's a conditional rezoning, so I hope that you, uh, listen to what a lot of other people said. This is too big a project for that piece of property. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Smith.
Well, I guess the, uh, citizens' comments on this may sound a little redundant, but the proposal is also redundant, so I guess the responses, uh, will be equally redundant to the proposal. Mr. Taylor's comments on the last statement, uh, seem to have the concept that Sterling Heights owes the world a place to live. There's something like, uh, seven billion people in the world, and a heck of a lot of them would like low-cost, affordable housing, but really, uh, Warren, or Sterling Heights, or Shelby Township, or, uh, Mount Pleasant, nobody owes the world a place to live. That essentially, when business and industry comes in, they employ people, and the people need a place to live. But I don't see a lot of employees coming in to business and industry that need a place to live, and, and hence, why does Sterling Heights feel that they need more rental housing other than, uh, developers can make more money with rental housing than they can with single-unit homes, which is, is really the bottom line? All these places, you can build an R sixty, or an R eighty, or R one-hundred house and make money, but if you put in a, a high-rise rental unit, you can make more money, and that's what it all comes down to, profit maximizing. Making all the money you can regardless of what happens to the next guy. I mean, that's, that's what's going on. It seemed like the last item that came up was so unacceptable that it smacked as a token throwaway, so that we could say no to the developer once, and now we owe him five yeses because we said no once. And this, this is what this, this whole thing smacks of. This, yeah, it may not be as close to residential as the others, but again, this is nothing like the apartments across from me on Utica Road. There's, I, I live across the street from apartments, but they're two-story apartments with green space and parking and play space, they're, they're a pleasant place to live. The, this, this new wave of super-high density with inadequate parking and no recreation is not a good way to live, and it's a downgrading and degrading of Sterling Heights, and we just don't want it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Zanoy, I think it is.
I apologize for not stating my name and address during my previous comments, but it's Joseph Zanoy. I live at three-four-three-three-zero Centennial Court. And I'm just, I, I believe as a citizen, per council rules, I can just bring up a general complaint in front of the council, which is sort of incidental to this sort of goings-on, but my, one of my main beefs was the way Planning Commission treated the citizens when I went to both of those meetings, and it seemed...
So we're on a new agenda.
No, but according to council rules, and I looked this up in the city charter, any citizen can come up and state a general complaint. It doesn't have to do with...
Yeah, that's during the communications from citizens' portion of the meeting, which will come at the end of our agenda.
Okay.
So this, you're, we're talking about this specific proposal, and so if you can keep your comments to this proposal...
Okay, well, in, in that case, I, I won't say that they're precious in their enforcement of their rules of order.
Anyone else on this item? Ms. Wright.
Um, so I'm gonna go sort of against the consensus here, and I will say, when the Planning Commission originally voted on this, I was on the fence. While it's not my ideal development, um, if it, if, with the changes Mr. Gallo made, if it came before the Planning Commission, I would actually vote yes on this. So I'm not completely against you. I do wanna say, as far as one of the gentlemen said, um, you know, we do need apartments, we do need to bring in younger, newer residents. I think one of the big issues is a lot of people talk about how there's too, we pay too much in taxes. And we are an aging community in Sterling Heights, I think that's something that everyone will agree with. And those older individuals who have lived here for twenty years in their homes, their taxes are capped, and they're not bringing in as much money as, say, someone like me who moved in three years ago. We pay more than double the amount of taxes as our neighbors. Developments like Mr. Gallo's and, and other individuals, they bring in a lot more tax money that benefits everybody in the city. So it's not just a, you know, we, we shouldn't have any apartments or anything like that. There's, there's a need, and they benefit everyone, and so we really shouldn't just discount them completely. And so as far as this one goes, I think it's in a decent place, and, and I would approve it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright. Uh, anyone else on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolve to adopt the MAP amendment to zoning ordinance, number two-seven-eight, to conditionally rezone, uh, property situated on the east side of Shana Road between Fourteen and Fifteen Mile Road in section thirty-six from O-1, Business and Professional Office District to RM Three Mul- Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise District, case PZ two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, subject to the terms and conditions of the conditional rezoning agreement that the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to sign on behalf of the city.
Support.
Removed and supported, any discussion?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked a, a lot about this, uh, last, um, last meeting. Um, and first of all, I, I feel like I need to apologize to O'Reilly Auto Parts, 'cause I think I referred to them as a competitor multiple times.
Let you know.
It's just, I, I just, I, I was actually at the auto parts store today, and so I took the opportunity to walk that property while I was there. Um, and I, I, I agree that we definitely need, uh, more housing in this city. This property has been vacant for a very, very, very long time. Um, and so I, I think this is really a, a good fit, um, for this project in this area. So I am going to support it. And I, let me also say that I, um, I am concerned about the sustainability issues that I think, obviously, we're not gonna address it on this project, but we really need to start addressing, uh, sustainability issues on future projects. But other than that, um, I'm gonna support this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanis. Mrs. Sirovsky.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, um, to, to address some of the, uh, concerns that the residents, especially the residents here, might have, this is a completely different project. This is a, a project that's off a major road, number one, so it's not cutting into, there aren't gonna be any cut-throughs to get to this, um, apartment complex. There are definitely, and, and some of the concerns were, um, and especially to Mr. Smith, who thinks that this might've been the same project, this is different, completely different project. This has a lot more parking, this has a lot of, much more green space, this has a big area of, quite a bit of a buffer to the residents that are completely farther away. And there is a lot of play area for the, for the kids that may, may or may not even live there. So this is a very different project than what the project that we had to, unfortunately, did not pass. So this is a project that we are able to pass, and I'm in full favor of, and I'm very happy to be able to support. A lot of changes were made, and this was a, it had been mentioned that initially in planning, and Ms. Wright also mentioned it, who was a planning commissioner, initially it had been turned down, but with the, it had been brought back to us because the Gallo, um, group had actually addressed every single concern that the Planning Commission and the residents had made, saying, well, this, these things are just not what we need, and what we would, and they gave ideas of what they would like done, and Gallo Properties went right through those and changed those. When they did that, that made that, all of those concerns that were addressed certainly made that much more of a, um, an, we were able to look at that, and it was brought to us to then look at and say, maybe we did want to possibly pass that and look at that. When those changes were made, we looked at it and said, yeah, this is, this is an idea we can get behind, this is a property that we think, that we can pass, and we can look at it and go for it. So I think that the zoning and the zoning ordinance and the adoption of this amendment is certainly something that I am in favor of. I think that we, we did make a couple of tweaks at it, but it certainly is something completely different than the last, um, adoption, amendment that came before us, so I am in favor of it. I think that we need to have a lot more of apartments, especially of affordable apartments, and this is something that I am very happy to be, be able to support. So thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Um, I, as well, am in support of this project. I think this is a prime example of the council taking each individual case and evaluating what's in the best interest of the entire city, not just a portion of the city, not just a developer in the city, but to take into consideration many factors, and this is the prime example of two different projects, two different locations. Uh, Mr. Gallo worked with us, worked with the Planning Commission, came up with a lot of compromises that I appreciate. To answer, I think it was Ms. Karpinski that asked if it failed with the Planning Commission, why did it even come to us? The Planning Commission is actually, um, a, um, recommend, recommending body to us. So they will recommend a rezoning adjustment to us, and then it's, the, the end result is in our hands. So that's, that's why, um, sometimes we go with the Planning Commission recommendation, and sometimes we don't. They are a recommending body. Okay? Just to clarify, clarify that. So, um, I, I really don't have much more to say. I'm in support of this, the, this project. Um, we talked ad nauseam about it at the last meeting, so, um, I have nothing further.
Okay, council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arkham.
Okay, um, first of all, I'm in favor of this project. I think it, it's a good fit where it's at. Like I said, that part, that property in there has probably, I, I'd been here since nineteen seventy-seven, it was, you know, they wanted to sell that off before that. So it, it's been a, it was on the market for ten years before the, the DMC, I think, even came in. It might've even been longer than that. So I think it's an opportunity to put, to put these apartments there. Not only that, is when you go across Shana, you have American House, you have other apartments, you have condos, so it isn't, you have your, um, other multi, um, units. So that's why it's, it's a good mix where it's at, and hopefully that, you know, there's going to be more as if there's, uh, you know, parcels that are available in the future. But the question that I have is because I've been to homes that are on Morrison, and I know that some of these backyards are, are larger because the residents were able to, um, buy some easement. And I don't remember exactly who owned the easement, but the backyards are really, really deep. And I was just wondering if that is the case where this apartment, um, is, these apartments are scheduled to be built? Because that would give them more distance between the apartments and their home. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod.
Uh, those properties along Morrison are about a hundred and fifty feet deep in total, uh, so they are a little bit deeper than our average lot. So, um, most of them are built pretty much at their front yard setback, so, uh, their backyards are a little deeper than the average.
And, and that's what I thought, and that's, when we say, we look at everybody, everything, you know, individually, there, they do have, um, a lot more distance between the actual apartments and people's homes. So that, that's another, a plus, I think, in putting these, um, apartments here. And I know you'll do a good job, and I'm in favor of it. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else, council? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, briefly, I just wanna commend Mr. Gallo on this project. I think it really has improved. With the additional green space in the back, um, I am still going to vote no, but it's a very close no for me. My single issue on this, on this piece is that there's a lack of green space between the cars parking at the building... the cars parking at the building edge and the door. Almost like the green space on the edges of the lot, if they were surrounding the building and the parking went out because it's in a commercial area, if the parking was on the edges, I'd be more comfortable with that. Because to me, this is a spot zone and that's the problem we have. Our master plan, again, needs to be updated. This is, we're putting a residential area into a place that's not zoned for it and it's not part of our planning. And we're doing an ad hoc, on the fly, at a council meeting, rather than spending money and making a plan and doing this efficiently like I discussed back at our, our budget hearings. We need to fix the master plan and the, and the zoning map in this city. This is a perfect example of that. Because if we, if we had an updated zoning map and we had updated expectations, we wouldn't be negotiating our last council meeting to make this work. We wouldn't be doing it on the fly with one week to get in new maps. We would have a better plan. That's on us as a council. I mean, we have to fix this. And it's, it's long-term coming. It's been on our, our radar for five years now. I've been discussing it. It needs to get done. So I'm going to vote no, but it's very close. The lack of amenities on things like this, the lack of sustainability, the lack of trees screening it, it's another building in a parking lot. And those absorb heat. They're, in the future, I don't think they're going to be the, the apartments people want to live in because there's no green space besides the back. The, the back green space is nice, it's lovely. I just wish it surrounded the building so people could look out their front door and instead of seeing a car in a parking lot, they could see a tree or a bush or a shrub or something that is not just concrete jungle. So I'm going to be voting no, but this, this definitely did improve through my, the council's efforts. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Rogeri. According to our backup material here, we have a list of the modifications that have been made to the drawings. Did you by any chance bring your drawings?
They're online. Yes, they were submitted to the, to Mr. McLeod.
I was hoping to maybe show them to the residents, put them on the little table there and let us show them.
Put them on the screen better.
I would like you to show the eight things, or eight modifications that you made to your original drawings to convince us that this was a good project.
Well, first and foremost, we did every modification that was requested from the last hearing. And we did attach a sheet to your package that indicates there's seven particular items with subcategories. Do you want me to read them all off or go?
Well, just, if you could, just kind of point them out. We have them in our backup material. We know what they are. I want you to tell the residents the modifications that you made to your original drawing to make this a good project for Sterling Heights.
Well, you want to do it, Mark?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let Mark Schover, the architect, go through it.
Mark Schover, Spire Design Group, business address 115 East Rod Tresher. Item number one, we reduced the building length by taking out those six units that increase our rear setback distance. Item two, because those units dropped off, we were able to reduce our parking, which gave us back more green space on the sides and also on these islands. Item three, because of reduced building size, you had a bigger rear setback.
Side yards?
The side yard stayed the same. The front yard stayed the same. The recreation area, we added, almost 4,000 square feet. From the very initial proposal with planning commission, we added 14,000 square feet.
And that is where?
That's in the rear here. And also we have little rec areas that we added on those islands.
Did you miss out on the air? The bottom was. Green space landscape increased. Go through that.
Yeah, so on the landscape.
Our green space and landscape was increased. On the road frontage along Shaner.
So we, we added some trees out here. We added trees along the roadway here on the increased green space. And we also increased some of our plantings in the, in these islands.
And you increased the size of the recreational islands.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So point these, point this out, 7C.
So these islands got increased.
With landscaping.
In landscaping, yes. Landscaping on the east side of the building.
The landscaping on the east side of the building was enhanced.
Yeah, from the driveline to the building, we enhanced that landscaping along here. The trees on the east side of the driveline, which we talked about here, creating that. And we added plantings of tall grasses along the north to the office building that's to the north.
And we decreased the coverage to 22% of the site.
That's what I wanted you to say.
I should have brought it up.
I should have read that last. I read that first.
It's okay.
I just wanted you to show that you do work with the city and you do try to listen to our suggestions and work with us to give us a nice project.
We appreciate it. We appreciate all your help.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Did everyone get a chance?
Can I just ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Schmidt.
Through the chair to Mr. Rogeri, Mr. Gallo. Your driveways, so it's like a circle. You can go all the way around the building. Are you doing one way in, one way out, or is it going to be two-way driveways? Okay. That's all.
Okay. So again, I'm not going to belabor this too much. I mean, I look at these two developments and I see very, very similar developments and I hear very, very different stories. And, and I, I can't square my mind around it. I mean, Mr. McLeod, if you have a phone on, can you silence it, please? Just silence it. Answer it and close it.
What the heck is that?
It's a cell phone. Okay, we'll, we'll move on. What, Mr. McLeod, what, what is the acreage of this parcel? If you know?
I believe this one is just under three acres.
Okay, so just under three, 2.8 acres. And, and, and there's 82 units for 2.8 acres, right? And the last one was 64 units for 2.2 acres.
Correct.
Okay? So we heard a lot about, too big, too much, too small. And, and right now I'm hearing, oh, this fits really well. This is, this fits well for the, the, what we want to do. It's pretty much the same thing. It's the same tonnage going into the same receptor, receptacle, I should say. The last one was 1.7 parking spaces per unit, which we heard was totally unacceptable. This is 1.9. The recreation space on the last one was about 400 square feet below what we normally, 400 square feet per unit below what we would like to see. This one's about 300 square feet below what we would like to see. The last one, the building was too long, 219 feet. This one's 463 feet. I mean, I, I don't get it. I really don't. I don't understand, I'm looking at two things that look identical. I mean, the, to me, the reason that this one is different is because the kids in the neighborhood at Irving, who live in houses, presumably by people who own those houses, deserve a safe place to play. And the kids that live in this apartment can go play over by Shaner Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogeri. Thank you, Mr. G and the rest of the group.
Have a good night.
You too. Move on. Next item on our, on our agenda is an ordinance adoption. This is to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not counsel, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
Resolve to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another ordinance adoption. This is to consider adoption of inordinants amending chapter 53, article 1, city code to update billing protocols and calculation of capital charges for water and sewer systems. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 53, article 1 of the city code to update billing protocols and calculation of the capital charges for water and sewer systems.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Start with you, Mr. Nelson.
Just wondering about items L and M. It seems like it's June 21st, 2022, and we are now adopting resolutions for Men's Health Month and Immigrant Heritage Month. I wonder if you might want to move that up to July?
Just a suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a consideration item. This is to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, these are three mayoral appointments. The nominations were made at the, at the previous council meeting for the appointment of Paul Jaboro, Gerald Rowe and Pam Preet Saru to the planning commission to terms ending June 30th, 2025. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Paul Jaboro, Gerald Rowe and Pam Preet Saru to the planning commission to terms ending June 30th, 2025, so that the appointees mean the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Just brief them, Mr. Mayor. All three are current members of our planning commission. They've been doing excellent and long work. We see it all the time coming to us. They'll do an excellent job as real appointees.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Public Employees, Supervisory Employees for the period July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vander.
Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind, I'll summarize both collective bargaining agreements since they're very similar, so that'd be items B and C. The existing collective bargaining agreements between the City of Sterling Heights Executive Group and also the Supervisors Group expire on June 30th, 2022. In anticipation of the expiration, the agreements, the groups have been negotiating and have come to tentative agreements, both of which are before you this evening. I want to summarize just briefly the key terms with respect to wages. In the first year, there'd be a 2% increase in wages, second year, 2.5%, third year, 3%. So it's three-year agreement. The base medical and hospitalization plan remains the same. Employees will pay 10% health insurance premium toward the coverage, which is now pretty standard in all of our collective bargaining agreements. The high deductible plan will be the healthcare plan taken into retirement for any eligible member retiring during the term of the agreement. Again, it's important to note that retiree healthcare has been eliminated for almost all groups now, but there are some that were grandfathered in. And there'll be a 10% premium share as well. Members are entitled or eligible for compensatory time up to 175 hours. Members who are provided paid time off or vacation sick and personal needs can have up to three days of unused PTO purchase at the end of the service year. The city has transitioned, as many know now, from traditional pension plans, as we talked about earlier this evening, to, to more common 401K or the like that the private sector is accustomed to now. And with that in mind, the city's contribution has been somewhat below market rate at 4%. So these agreements increase the DC contribution or the equivalent of a 401K to, from 4% to 5%. And then it will increase to 5.5% in 2023. In addition, for members who don't have retiree healthcare, the city does contribute for those members to the equivalent of a health savings account. And that amount, that contribution will be $2,000 annually. It's important to note, though, we save millions of dollars annually by transitioning from retiree healthcare to these health savings accounts. So definitely a good value here for the city. For members who have earned a higher education degree, masters, for example, from an accredited college or university, the city's annual stipend will be $2,000. There's also a creation of a deputy chief, deputy chief of police job classification. So the new position is funded in the current fiscal year budget. And the process for filling the selection of the city's first deputy chief of police will commence very soon. And while the percentage utilized for determining performance pay are not changing, the city and the executive group will be provided, and the supervisory group, for a monetary supplement to the annual performance pay to reward extraordinary performance for those who qualify and/or address internal and/or external inequity with the marketplace that may pop up here and there. So that's a thumbnail sketch of the key provisions of the two agreements. And with all that in mind, I'm respectfully requesting that the mayor and city council approve the two collective bargaining agreements that are before you this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. I appreciate that you gave us that update consolidated into one, but we will take these items separately. So I will ask for comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item, which is the, the MAP Supervisory Employees Contract? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and MAP Supervisory Employees for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, and authorize the mayor and city of, and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Sarowski?
Nope. I just want to commend the city for getting this done quite quickly and glad that it's over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, a couple of things. First, just to be clear, the supervisor employees only get $1,500 for a master's degree versus 2,000 for the supervisor, for the, the directors group. I believe I saw that in the contract. You said, they say bulk of the same amount. I wanted to.
Yeah, there, there are some small nuances, Councilman Radke.
No worries. I just wanted to be clear. Also, just for my own edification, what is the maximum, the monetary award for an equity in marketplace or for performance? What was the maximum you could give someone for that? I'm just curious.
Mr. Vander.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, it's a good question. It really depends on the situation. It depends on the position and it depends on the marketplace. It could be anywhere from $1,000 or it could be as much as a few thousand dollars. Typically, it doesn't get into the 10, $15,000 range, but periodically we do have to monitor the marketplace. We want to make sure that all of our positions. Historically, our philosophy with the organization has been to keep employees in the top third of, of the marketplace comparisons. has been to keep employees in the top third of the marketplace comparisons at all levels because that helps us retain good employees, talented employees, and really helps with our attraction efforts as well.
So if I'm understanding you properly, if it becomes a thing we're always doing, it will just raise the pay scale in the contracts. We don't have to continue to give out awards. Is that correct, Mr. Vanderpool?
Partially correct. What this allows us to do is to make those adjustments more administratively without having to negotiate, go through a laborious job analysis, MOUs and the like. It's just a little more streamlined. We still go through the same analysis in terms of the marketplace, but in terms of implementing, it'd be a little more streamlined.
Okay. And I just have one final question. I looked through the contract earlier, but I am not an attorney, not like the mayor or Mr. Kaczyuski, who can be very legalese. The holidays that we offer off, I mean, this year, the court's closed on Juneteenth because of Independence Day. What is the city's stance on that going forward? Is it a floating holiday or are we going to readdress that? Because it's kind of odd for the court to be closed, the city to be open, and vice versa.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, yes, it's a good point. I mean, the difference between the city and the court is this state, or the court is governed by the state court administrator, and whatever he or she determines is appropriate, the court must then follow that. So it's sometimes a little different than our schedule. We do not have that Juneteenth as a formal scheduled holiday for the city, but that's something that likely could be considered in future collective bargaining agreements.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Kosky.
To follow up on that through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. In the past, if there was some question about a wage being paid to a certain position, there was a procedure where they had to request a change. And then, again, you did research, you went to MML. I don't remember everything, but I remember it being quite extensive to show that we were underpaying that particular position. So basically, what you're doing is you're eliminating all of that, and how will you know that this position requires a higher wage? What's the procedure? Will the employee come to you and say, give me a raise?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kosky, it's all of the above. This can happen in a couple of different ways. It could be an employee, typically, it's the bargaining unit that would come to us and say, we've had a member that is requesting that their position be reviewed because they feel there's a market inequity. And a lot of times then, we will proceed with that review and take a good look at it. In this case, involving the executive group and the supervisory group, it's, we're a little more tuned in. This affects only 14 members with respect to supervisors and eight with respect to directors. So our HR team, including myself, we're pretty tuned into the marketplace for those positions, and we know when one of them is getting out of line. So oftentimes, we can make the adjustment without a formal request being made as well. So it kind of works both ways.
So it'll be more or less in your hands that if you see that or you are aware that that position requires a higher wage, then you will just automatically go ahead and have a conversation with the union and adjust.
Yes, and also go through a comprehensive analysis. You know, we don't, we would never do this by the seat of our pants. We always have to have very good data before we make such an adjustment.
Okay. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we're going to take up communications from citizens per our city council rules. Communications from citizens.
We didn't do the separate.
As I said, we do both.
He has to.
I don't have a choice. We're going to do communications from citizens, and we'll come back to the next one after communications. At 9:30 PM, we go to communications from citizens. It's now 9:31. So we'll do this, and then we'll go back to the agenda after communications. So if you're here to speak on an agenda item, you will get a chance, but this is the part of the meeting where you can talk about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Mayor, can we run the time? You know, well, he's given an opportunity to come up here, but it is time to start. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Larry Meitzner, M-E-I-T-Z-N-E-R. I was here two weeks ago. My address, 444-96 Stirrett. Had a nice presentation. We'll forget that. I will reiterate that the city's position has been advanced by Nathan Petrusak, the What I would like to make the presentation, can't do it in three minutes, what I'd like to do, maybe get together the 11 of us and maybe discuss the issue I have with the civil rights violation by the City of Sterling Heights. Got a bunch of documentation here I'll pass over. There should be eight copies. The most unusual one shows a picture of our illustrious mayor and his reelection campaign. Took me a few days to figure out Saturday, October 23, 2021, that was the date that the city's response was due. Obviously, Mr. Mayor was more interested in reelection than he was city business. I would ask Mr. Mayor, take charge, but he's already dropped the ball twice. I'd ask Mr. Vanderpool, but he's dropped it three times, and they come to the court asking boo hoo for a do-over. This is life. There are no do-overs. I'd ask the city attorney, but he's got a vested interest. It's called a cash cow. How much will they bill Michigan Mutual Risk for the city's benefit? So I guess that leaves Madam Mayor Protem. May I drop the ball, drop it on your shoulders, confer with your council members, maybe about getting together sometime, maybe not in two weeks, probably four weeks, I got more stuff to ship down to you. And I got 33 seconds. So if you're not inclined to pick up the ball, perhaps you could find somebody else on the council that'll take charge. And Ms. Teresa enjoys being here with everybody. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Meitzner, and I think Mayor Protem Sarowski is the right woman for the job.
Support.
Anyone else under communications from citizens? Okay, I'll close that portion, and we'll go back to the agenda. So the next item up is to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Executive Group for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. We did have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. I assume nothing more, Mr. Vanderpool? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. Any comments from the public on this item? If not, close that portion, and counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
I'm going to go with Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Executive Group for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor and city managers to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, counsel?
Think it was explained.
Yep. Counsel, anyone else? If not, just very briefly, I want to thank our bargaining units here, these two bargaining units, our employees are the best asset we have in this city, and I thank them for their dedication to the city, and we hope that these contracts and collective bargaining units, or collective bargaining agreements, reward them for the work that they put in. They do a fantastic job for our residents. We all should be very proud of the work they do. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to approve the seventh amended consent judgment for 38810 Ryan Road to authorize the city attorney to execute it and file it with the Macomb Circuit Court to authorize the city attorney to record it against the property after entry by the court. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this relatively brief tonight from the standpoint that, I believe, there we go. In terms of, as you noted, this is the potential seventh amendment to this overall consent judgment for the Muslim community of Macomb, who currently reside within this particular address at the 38810 Ryan Road. They're actually looking, this is the site here, this is kind of looking northeast, they're the back portion, the back square building, if you will, in the center, dead center of the screen. They currently occupy half of that building. They're looking to occupy the other half, this particular site, as well as those surrounding it, to the top portion of the screen, which would be north to the west, the twin building, if you will, that fronts Ryan Road, the place of worship to the south, as well as the property to the east, are all subject to a consent judgment, the same consent judgment. That's why there's been a number of amendments to it. You can see that a little bit more readily in this depiction here. This is our zoning map. The red outline is the subject property tonight, 38810 Ryan Road. Here's the east elevation of the property itself, showing their current entrance, and then this would be the west elevation, the side that actually fronts upon Ryan Road. The floor plan is depicted here. Again, they currently occupy half of this building. They've been there for a number of years in terms of occupying this and conducting religious ceremonies there. This particular addition, or I should say, occupation of the additional half of the building would simply be for administration for additional classrooms. No additional real prayer area would be provided for in this particular location. There would be no expansion of the building. Again, this is simply taking occupancy of the additional square footage on the opposite side of the building. This shows the overall site plan, Ryan Road to the bottom portion of the screen, if you will. North is to the left-hand side. So again, the shaded area is that area, although somewhat light in this graphic, shows the portion of the building that would be the additional square footage. This is, all total is about 3,600 square feet. So again, realistically, right now, the consent judgment basically says that this property be used for office purposes. Places of worship are not permissible use in the office district, hence the amendment that's before you tonight. So that's pretty much the consent in a nutshell, if you will. I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that counsel might have. But again, it's a pretty straightforward amendment just to allow for basically a doubling of the size of the building to allow that additional 3,600 square feet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Go ahead, Mayor.
Good evening, members of council. I'll be brief because I know it's late, and I know you all want to go home at some point today. Alton Yaki and Dravis, on behalf of the petitioner. I am just here to answer any questions you might have. Mr. McLeod was very straightforward. I worked with Mr. Denault for over a year on amendment after amendment after amendment, trying to get, be as accommodating as possible. The community center is there for a place of worship. However, this expansion would simply be to allow, as Mr. McLeod pointed out, for a community room, classrooms, a warming kitchen, basically, for gathering, not for anything extensive. So we hope that the council this evening votes to approve the amendment, and we can move forward on occupying the remainder of the building. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience on this item? Okay, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to approve the seventh amended consent judgment in the case David C. Adams et al. versus City of Sterling Heights, Macomb County Circuit Court, case number 1978-001955-CE, and authorize the city attorney to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Just briefly, I think this was well explained. We look forward to letting you use the building. It seems to be an oversight we're correcting, so we're all happy to have you guys there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
I have no comments other than good luck, and hopefully you have better, a good use of that building. So enjoy yourselves. Yeah.
Counsel? Congrats. Looks like it's going well. So thank you, we appreciate you, and glad to have you as part of the community. So counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything for tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Kaczyuski?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, any new business or reports? Nothing tonight.
No.
Nothing tonight. Okay.
It's late.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out tonight, and have a great Fourth of July.